You said it. Did you say that?
I did. But I agree with it. It's very partisan.
Good, thank you.
We're gonna waive the protocol about 24-hour notice.
What?
How can you do that?
How can you do that? You can't. You're not obstructing. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. Hey, for one, we want to call meeting order. Can you record that? Very good.
Our notice of this meeting of the planning board was sent to our official papers in Postonan Municipal Board on January 28, 2013.
May I just briefly call make a roll call?
Mr. Bowery?
Here.
Mr. Lindis?
Here.
Mr. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Sheridan? Here. Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. McGovern?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
May I ask that a member of the planning board make an application to waive the general protocols for our agenda session, including the flag? Can't say we're women, salute them right now.
I'll make that work. One second.
Okay. What is that? What are you waving?
The Pledge of Allegiance. I don't have a flag to do that here. Usually we would do that, so I'm asking that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
As a special meeting, we have the one agenda item, and that was originally to discuss the amending of the zoning regulations to allow year-round liquor licenses in beachfront commercial zones. Understand that?
No.
Mr. Mayor, you want the floor?
Yes, thanks. We're not going to move on this tonight, and I'll explain why. We, when we had our groundbreaking for our first pile, Governor Christie came to Belmar, we had a meeting at La Dolce Vita, with the owner of Dolce Vita and also the owner of 10th Avenue Brito. Both of them, and myself, requested that seasonal liquor licenses be able to open earlier this year. They were looking for March 1st. The governor said he would work on putting together an executive order to allow seasonal liquor licenses, assuming the borough gave their consent to open early. Just to get an idea, there are eight seasonal liquor licenses in the state of New Jersey, so it only pertains to a few restaurants, or a few restaurants and bars. They're working on the language so that they could open on March 1st. It came to our attention that it wasn't zoned for a year-round license, or that, rather, going from an opening of May 1st to March 1st was an expansion of non-conforming pre-existing use. So, I talked to Doug, and we came up with a change in the ordinance that would allow them to have that opening on March 1st. Turns out that La Dolce Vita is actually categorized as a restaurant with a liquor license, and so therefore is not non-conforming pre-existing. It's actually conforming. So, therefore, we're not gonna have to make any changes to the existing ordinance. I will tell you, and it's great living in a small town, but often rumors spread faster than the plate. And there were some folks who put out rumors that we were gonna have, all of a sudden, a rush of bars to the Ocean Front. It was never true, and thank you for spreading that rumor. It was never true. The entire intention of this was to be in a position so that our businesses could take advantage of the request we were asking of the governor, that he said yes to. So, since they're not zoned, or since they are zoned conforming, we're not gonna make any changes. But again, to put any crazy rumors to rest, there are no new bars going up on Ocean Avenue.
What about the ones that are there, like DJ's?
They're all stagnant.
I know. What about them getting a year-round liquor license?
Well, they would have to go before the zoning board, because they're not considered a restaurant, they're considered a bar. So, they are non-conforming pre-existing. What's that? Yes, but, so if anyone's here about more bars on Ocean Avenue, that's not gonna happen, and we're not gonna change the zone.
Wait, from what I understand, from that ordinance, you added the strip from Dunkin' Donuts, that Dunkin' Donuts is on, that that block, and it was actually physically added afterwards, was added in. My concern is Dunkin' Donuts can get 20, 30 motorcycle guys at one time. If you think you're gonna put a bar there, and you think that all these guys on motorcycles are gonna go to have coffee instead of liquor, whose advantage is this? Who are we doing this to?
Let me just address that. There will be no additional bars on Ocean Avenue, the second time I say it.
But that's not what the ordinance says.
The Dunkin' Donuts will not become a bar.
I'm not saying that Dunkin' Donuts, but whole strip.
We're not, we're not gonna move on the proposed ordinance.
But wait a minute. Why is it, why are you having this special meeting that has to be done last minute?
Oh, that's a good question.
Wait, let me finish, please. Why are you doing this last minute to get a smaller group than normal, if, this part, what does the strip, what is that, 16th to 17th street? If you can verbally say to me that they're not gonna, you're not gonna put any bars on that block, why did you put it in the ordinance? And include that block? We're the one, you know, you-
I understand what you're saying.
Let me just finish.
You're not listening to me?
Yeah.
There's not gonna be any bars between 16th and 17th.
There can't be. We can't add licenses.
The state of New Jersey won't let us add another liquor license.
That doesn't mean there won't be one for sale.
There's three.
But they didn't go there. Are you putting it in ordinance?
I understand. It's not. It's not. You can't say-
It's in-
I know. I just said, we're not gonna act on it.
Well, then why did you-
The reason why-
Then why are you putting it in legally, in writing, if verbally, we're supposed to just assume you're not gonna act on it?
You're not, we're not, we're not gonna change the ordinance. Do you understand what I'm saying, when I say we're not gonna change the ordinance?
No, you are changing the ordinance. You're making a new ordinance.
I'm just, I'm telling you, we're not gonna change the ordinance. We're not gonna vote on it.
You know, there's this joke about, you know, translations of, trust me. I mean, you're saying you're not gonna do it, but you're-
We're not gonna-
But we're here to change the ordinance, and now you're telling us that you're not gonna act on it?
Exactly.
Why are you changing it if you're not going to some-
We're not changing it.
And how do I know in four years, somebody else isn't going to change it?
I don't know.
And decide to put a bar there.
That count. You wanna address this?
If I can address just two issues. The planning board does not now, unless there's a change in the law, have the ability to enact any ordinance. The planning board does not now, unless there's a change in the law, have the ability to enact any ordinance. On occasion, the planning board is given an ordinance to review, to provide comment to mayor and council, because in a sense, we're your planning expert for the borough. This ordinance came to our attention to make comment on. As far as I know, there's been no first reading by mayor and council, who are the entity that do have the authority to enact ordinances, has been no first reading, no second reading. This is a, and we have them, I don't wanna say on a regular basis, but occasionally, when we first had outdoor dining, before that ordinance was put into place, it was, what do you think, planning board did some fine tuning, back and forth, because the process of making legislation is not all in one shot. This is what that meeting was, to get the planning board's input with regard to this ordinance. We do have the ability, this evening, or on any evening, to say, just because we like it, or even if we dislike it, it becomes law.
But I'm assuming we're having this meeting, so eventually it can be voted upon by-
No, planning board can't vote, well, by council. Council still, even if they move it, still has to send it back to the planning board. This, but occasionally, we get the opportunity to take a look at an ordinance and make comment on it. As to your other point, if you review the ordinance, I would say very carefully, it's the existing B.C. zones. The existing B.C. zones are not expanded or added to. It's just that right now, if you take a look at your ordinance, many years ago, all on beachfront commercial, bars, taverns, and pubs were permitted uses. There was a change in the zoning then that said, you know what, they can do everything else, they can still exist, but they're no longer permitted uses. So now, in a sense, you grandfathered those uses. All right? They can still exist, they can still open, and depending on their licensure, if it's a year-round license, presumably they can operate year-round. If it's a seasonal license, they can operate seasonally.
Well, there are seasonal.
Some are, but some aren't, and some, and some opt, oh no, some opt.
In the B.C. district.
In the B.C. district, some are seasonal, some are not, but some may have also been year-round, that never operate outside of the season.
On the ocean front, which one is-
Yeah.
I'm saying some.
Who you're speaking of, 'cause I only know two.
Well, let me back, before we get sidetracked.
We're all here, so we should all have-
What bar is non-seasonal on the Ocean Front?
That's what I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Any, any use, any use in the public use district, that the municipality decides to have liquor, is allowed to operate if they decide.
We're talking beachfront commercial.
Just talking beachfront.
All right.
So, what, what-
You said beachfront before.
I'm at beachfront commercial.
Beachfront commercial, I agree, seasonal, but beachfront, you have the public use, if someone wanted to have a function at the 13th Avenue Pavilion-
I'm talking beachfront commercial.
Okay.
Beachfront commercial, I agree, all seasonal, as, to the best of my knowledge. All right. So, while we're here, can we have a discussion on what is going to be done to beachfront commercial, because we do hear rumors around town.
There's no changes to beachfront commercial.
Can I ask, just-
It's a new boardwalk.
For the council?
Which is- Discuss another time. Just, just-
We're all here.
Well, yeah, the only reason is this, the only reason is this, and again, 'cause I would've told him, you can't, so you can blame me?
He's the mayor, you're telling him.
Yeah, I may not be here next year, but, that aside, because we have a special meeting, because we have-
Will you listen to him?
Let me explain, please, please.
Why are you doing this?
What we do, he's trying to explain to everybody, not you there.
She's a taxpayer. I think I'm speaking, am I speaking for everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
And listen, listen to our expert, give him a chance to talk.
I really need to speak to council right now about the sunshine law, right now.
No.
No?
You're out of order.
Fine.
You're out of order.
Fine.
The reason, the reason I've told the mayor not to discuss what's happening in the beachfront commercial, at a special meeting, this may be the issue he's gonna raise, at a special meeting, we are only allowed to discuss those matters which the meeting is advertised for. Our meeting was advertised for specifically-
No, it was not. It was not published. It was not published in the paper. And that's my point, councilor. You're in violation of the law, councillor. It was not published.
I was, I'm advised that it was published.
It was not. I know you're advised, but we have proof that it was not.
Then you can raise that issue at a later date.
Why? We're raising it now. Well, raise it with the prosecutor, 'cause that's where you go after this, right?
And that's what you do.
Fine, thank you.
And that's what you do.
But I wanna be on the record that, right now-
That's your allegation, I'm telling you-
Wait a minute, that's not an allegation. We had the newspaper, it was not in the papers.
In the paper.
That's a fact, it's not an allegation.
And that may not matter for purposes of the notice under the sunshine law.
We got it right here, you wanna read it? You wanna read it, it's right here. It says it must publicly, 48 hours before.
I'm just saying.
You obviously don't know the law, 'cause you're not, you're in violation of it.
I do, and I know the case law that backs it up.
Well, here, why don't you read it to everybody, so they can-
Because this isn't remedial courses, and it goes beyond the discussion of the liquor license at the beachfront commercial.
This is an invalid meeting, because you, violation of the sunshine law, councillor.
And any action we take formally will be void.
That's right, fine. So, we're wasting our time here, we should all just leave.
I mean, let's get back and let this woman, I'd say what she wants to say before everybody is around.
I tried to, I tried to, but this person took the floor, so.
The first meeting, and forgive us if we all appear a little hostile, but as I said, we're all residents, we're all taxpayers, we're all invested in this town. When we came to the meeting regarding the boardwalk, there were some 200-plus people in the room, and you decided we're not gonna take any questions. When people started saying something, you took five questions, and then I believe it was two bonus questions, with 200-plus people in the room. Obviously, the people who are here now and tonight, and what were here then, are concerned about what's gonna happen on R, how, and especially in the B.C. district, as it pertains to the consistencies with the master plan that has been in place for the last 30 years. So, we're here, it's not a meeting, nothing has to be on the record, you're the mayor, we're your residents, let's have a discussion.
Well, I tell, we can do that-
Without being officious.
Then I, then I will ask if there's, unless there's other public comment, because we do, we are obliged to take public comment, may we have any other public comment? Comment, not necessarily questions or quizzes, but public comment.
Can't ask a question?
You can, I'm just, I'm just saying, and again, I want to have the meeting go forward.
Doug, that's why I've been holding up my hand and not pouring out. Just real quick, Matt, I'm not really clear on this, you wanted to allow La Vida Dolce to open up in March instead of later, but, because you thought he had a seasonal license that wouldn't let him open until April or May or something?
He has a seasonal license.
He has a seasonal liquor license, but then you found out, could you just run that past me again, 'cause I'm not really clear on that?
Sure. La Dolce Vita has a seasonal liquor license that allows him to serve alcohol between May 1st and November 15th.
Okay.
The governor's gonna do an executive order to allow him, along with seven other businesses, to open March 1st, as opposed to May 1st, two months earlier.
I see, are those seven all in Belmar, or all over?
No, Avon, Spring Lake, there's three in Belmar. 10th Avenue Brito, La Dolce Vita, and DJ's.
Okay.
When we looked at it, since it was a liquor license and a B.C. zone, we figured it was non-conforming pre-existing, which means they couldn't open March 1st, even if the governor allowed them. However, they're actually zoned, or they're actually considered a restaurant, and restaurants are permitted-
Under Christie's executive order?
No, 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 under our zoning, restaurants are permitted in the B.C. zone. So, the action, we were, the action I was gonna ask the planning board to consider, and then later today for the council to take, we don't need to take, so if we don't need to change it, we're not going.
Because Christie's executive order applied to restaurants?
No, no, it has nothing to do with the executive order, it has to do with the zoning in our town. And the fact that La Dolce Vita's actually considered a restaurant, not a bar.
I see. So, just one, just one more question. Since it's not gonna affect the hours of operation that they're permitted, right, they're, they're not gonna be allowed to stay open till 2, right?
Their liquor license dictates their hours of operation.
And that's 10 o'clock, or 11 o'clock, or whatever it is?
So, does this executive order apply to DJ's? Are they now to be open March 1st, or does this executive order-
But they're not a restaurant, they're a bar.
No, no, let me finish. It's, it applies to them because they have a seasonal liquor license, but they're not zoned, they're, under the zoning, they're not permitted, so the borough of Belmar is not permitting them under the zoning to open March 1st. They can go to the zoning board and ask for relief from the existing zoning to open March 1st.
So, will that be in the paper plenty of times, so we can all come and say so?
That's up to the zoning, what's on us.
Just put it on closing, at the end of the year. Will they be standing in that, or same job?
Same. Mr.?
I have a question regarding beachfront commercial zoning.
This is only on liquor licenses, so we can close the meeting and then talk about it.
No, I mean, maybe you could clarify, is that beachfront commercial, both sides of the street, from one end to the other, both sides, boardwalk, or is it every other block kind of a thing? That was, it's not every, it's not every block, is it?
No.
No, it's just the three that-
You have, you have, you have, because this does affect the liquor licensing in the B.C. zone, you have really four, but really three and a half B.C. zones, right? They exist between 19th and 18th, that's where DJ's is, they exist between 5th and 4th, that's where La Dolce Vita is. And they're all, they're, on the ocean itself, on the east side, that's public use, west side of Ocean Avenue, that's, that's where the B.C. and R75 zones are for now.
That's what I wanted to clarify, there's more than one zone on Ocean Avenue.
The other two, between 10th and 11th, and between 9th and 8th, those are your, and even when you get down to La Dolce Vita, that B.C. zone, again, think of it as one lot deep, doesn't even go up the whole block, it's one lot deep, and wherever La Dolce Vita is, it's only like half that block, half of that, one block deep, so that's why I say it's really three and a half. It exists in those areas, primarily those properties that have frontage on Ocean Avenue, one block back, in those blocks that I talked about.
Do you say 16th and 17th is in that, or not?
No, between 17th and 16th, that's where the, technically, that's a B.C. zone. Has nothing to do necessarily with liquor or no liquor, but it's beachfront, beachfront commercial.
I didn't think it was the whole-
Right, it isn't, because years ago, they took that out, we have, you have, I think you still have a techno at the north end, R100, R75 is the predominant, and, but as you get down to the south end, where the lot blocks are a little bit smaller, I think you have a hard berry R40 down there. Most of the predominant along Ocean Front now is R75. And I said predominant, if you counted up the number of lots, you would, that would be predominant. Any other questions?
I have a question. Excuse me, what about Matisse? I'm here mainly because I live across the street.
Matisse is public use, Matisse is, Matisse's borough property. Again, I've not extensively studied your ordinance, but it's in, it's ordinance, I think it's 17, basically, mayor and council deserve themselves the ability to allow use of liquor in those establishments, or allow what goes there, basically, mayor and council, it's in a sense, their opportunity to decide what goes there.
Mayor, are you going to do anything with Matisse? Well, we're gonna talk about that.
And that, that may be a different discussion, I'm gonna advise and-
For many years now, the town-
If there's, if there's, see if, if you have that.
I just have a question for the mayor.
Reel out.
I have a question for the mayor. So, basically, when you boil this down to, you were trying to do something for La Dolce Vita? Okay. And part of that was to also have another establishment that was affected, is DJ's.
Well, they would, you couldn't do one without the other.
Correct. But, and you didn't know that, that La Dolce Vita had a liquor license that was seasonal, and they were a restaurant?
I knew they had a seasonal liquor license.
And they were, they were a restaurant?
But I assumed that they were a bar restaurant, I didn't know that they're classified restaurant with a liquor license.
Did you have any feelings last year-
Bill, the difference is, a restaurant-
I'm speaking, Brian.
Serves more food than-
I understand what a restaurant is. Mayor, did you not have pretty in-depth discussions with the owners of La Dolce Vita about all their restrictions and uses, just this past summer, it went on for about a month?
Maybe, let's go for-
Your chief of police wasn't involved in that? Having discussions with zoning and making sure that they're compliant with their licenses and going on for about a month?
That's up to the chief.
But you didn't have discussions with your, with them about what was involved there?
With who?
La Dolce Vita, and your chief of police.
I don't really know.
It's hard to plead that. And finally, you knew this since you met with our governor, why the short notice to everyone? Why wasn't out on the Belmar blog and, and your Twitter account and count the papers, like, I, you know, Channel 12, been all in? How come this wasn't out that you were gonna have this special meeting with such short notice?
Great question. Since I thought they were a bar, a bar restaurant, and I thought that they were non-conforming, and I talked with our attorney, we both thought the same thing, the one way to address it would be to address the ordinance. But ordinance is, you're on the council, so you should know this, when an ordinance is passed, it doesn't go into effect two mornings a day.
I'm well aware of that.
So that means we'd have to pass this ordinance on February 9th, so that would be in effect for March 1st, for the executive order. So to do that, you have to have a council meeting 10 days before that, that's pretty much today.
But the mayor, the governor was here when?
No, before that, you have to have the planning board refer.
Understood.
So that's why.
And, and this came up, this short a notice that you, from the governor meeting and being here, that it took this long and-
Because we didn't think about, I mean, the governor was here-
Belmar residents didn't know about this meeting?
The governor was here January 9th, and we ended up realizing that there was an issue with the zoning sometime last week.
And nothing was put on the website, your Twitter account?
Nothing. Things were put up on the website, and it was-
About this meeting?
Yeah, past meeting.
No, they violated the sunshine law, we told you that.
You can talk to our attorney about it, Mike Dupont, he called the lawyers. Not the attorney, though. You know that, right?
Understood.
I have a question, as it relates to this meeting practice. And again, I could be wrong, did you not have an advisory council that you put together to talk about this subject, whether or not you should either expand or add, might have been the licenses in the B.C. zone? Is there no advisory council that you had put together, or that the council had asked to?
There's an advisory council on the board.
I could, I just, I apologize, 'cause I came in late, can, can you just clarify for me, is DJ's really going to open March 1st?
No.
No, okay, so I, I-
They have to go before the zoning. If they wish, it's up to them. They have to go before the zoning board to-
Wish they probably do.
Get relief, put the system on.
Okay, so-
Can I just kind of explain those masses there, to you, kind of specifically, if I can? You have to understand.
Stand up, Patty, so everybody can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna say this clearly, and I think I speak for everybody.
Should we shut the meeting and then?
This has to do with the liquor license, I honestly, it really does. When you were still in college and drinking at all the parties with my daughter and all the rest of the kids, it was hell here, it really was, Claire, you remember, and the quote desirable north end was probably the worst end in town, I had Montego Bay and every bar in the world. I was too old for it.
You're up there, right?
Yeah, I'm more your age. It, it was crazy, property values, people talked about Belmar as a wild town, it wasn't a great town. Right now, we have a super town, we've got super people, everybody came through this, this storm and helped one another. We don't wanna go back to the 80s, this is why everybody's hysterical, because things were snuck in, things were snuck in. When we had that 12 o'clock closing, unfortunately, it was only for five years, but that five years turned this town around, now bring all the bars, look at the values of your houses where you live now, the north end, it's certainly worth a lot more money, and, and those of you who may be at the north end, help us at the south end, we helped you.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, maybe take a token, Belmar's a whole liberal, and Dolce Vita owns that whole strip, you can make a bar out of the whole place. You can understand why it's worried, and no, there was a slip-up somewhere, because it wasn't, we didn't see it online, we didn't see this advertised anywhere, so that's where the hysteria is coming from, it's like, uh-oh, they're slipping this in, and then when you see that Mr. Luddy, he is on the advisory board, and you start putting two and two together, and you're thinking, here we go again. And please understand.
I, I do understand, and, and, don't worry, I take full responsibility, that's why, you know, I appreciate the members of the board coming tonight, and I, I'm sorry we're not, I'm wasting their time.[1768.94] But it was, you know, the intention was to, to make sure that our establishments are in a position to take advantage of requests we asked of the governor, and he said yes to. And it's, you know, you know, we thought we were going to have to change the zoning to make that happen. I will tell you, and again, great living in a small town, we all know each other, but people love spreading rumors. And, you know, I got an email today that there are going to be more bars on the oceanfront. And I wrote back to the person, I said, listen, you can hear directly from me, there will not be any more bars at the oceanfront. If anyone tells you there are going to be, they're lying to you. There are not going to be any more bars at the oceanfront.
So who's this advisory board, what's important is on?
Well, we can talk about that after we close the meeting.
So with the, you have the bars, obviously, you have the foot traffic going through DJ's debar A, the cell phones in the middle of the night, now your dogs are barking in the middle of the night, there's people, the taxis, the people, whoa, taxi.[1680.83]